All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Select Board Budget Work Session today, Monday, November 15. I'm Sabrina Dunlap, and we have Ken Trum, Anna Wells, Jeff Donahue, and Stephen Whitley here. So that is our call to order. So first up, we have administrative approval of the consent agenda.
I'm over. We approve the consent again, November 15, 2021.
All right. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. All right. Next is approval of the public meeting minutes, November 8, 2021.
I will give an enthusiastic second with Peta's to care for a great first set of minutes.
I second that second. All right. All those in favor? Okay, so I think, I didn't think that TPL would be here right at 5:30, so I was thinking we would have a discussion about masks first, but I'm open to switching that around. I don't think it'll be a long discussion, if you don't mind waiting for a few minutes. Okay, so I talked to Neil today, and given the numbers in Hopkinton and the community spread in Merrimack County, which is pretty alarming, I am going to suggest that we, again, require masks in town hall and the slasher center, regardless of vaccination status. So.
I'll pass along that the senior red council met today, and they didn't take a strong opinion one way or the other. So they kind of saw the positives and the minuses.
Do you sound bored? I like it. Thank you. But Paula's had discussions with you about this, right?
Yes, so largely Paula wanted to make sure this was discussed one way or the other before they buy Santa or things like that. If they have to reestablish how they're doing things, they'd rather know sooner than later.
Yeah. But you were saying, Neil, like, you think, in terms of at least town hall, like, hopefully there aren't any. Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Hopefully, there aren't, I mean, you don't think anyone who works here would object to this?
No, people are wearing them on. I think everybody that's here wears them.
Yeah.
At least part of the time, anyways.
Schools definitely are having some issues right now. It's pretty alarming. And I certainly, like, I think that there's data to back this up. I'm hearing about plenty of people who are vaccinated, who are getting COVID. It's obviously, like, breakthrough cases are a thing. I think especially as boosters, you know, for a lot of us, I think we're hitting the six-month mark and beyond. And so it just seems like it would be prudent at this juncture to do it, because I don't think we're out of the light. I mean, I think every metric is getting worse right now, as far as I can tell. The spread is at the high level in Merrimack County, and things we're hearing from the state are that things are going to be worse heading into this winter than they were last winter, which is sort of discouraging. So I think that, when is the breakfast with Santa supposed to be?
It's in December.
It's usually like the second or third weekend, maybe?
Yeah.
December 2nd, do you think?
It might be the first Saturday.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know that this decision means that that can't happen. It just might mean that it has to be modified. Like, maybe there's, I just don't even, you know, sort of regardless of this conversation, I think gathering a bunch of young children indoors when it's pulled out right now is not smart. I mean, I love breakfast with Santa, so maybe there's a way they could do it, modify it so that it's just not actually breakfast, so that people aren't sitting maskless.
Think that they still have it.
Yeah.
They wouldn't necessarily.
Yeah.
Currently, the breakfast is scheduled to happen on both levels to try to keep the numbers in one spot. They would modify that.
December 11th, by the way. Okay.
And I don't, I don't see the numbers getting better anytime soon. It's just not how this is going to go. And I, I agree that I think wearing masks is a really effective way to try to prevent community spread.
Begrudgingly, I agree with the numbers, you know, at this point. I assume this would also apply to senior lunch.
Yeah, and Neil said that, like, half of the lunches are still people doing drive-through anyway, so. I mean, again, that's probably the safest thing at this moment, and I hope that, I mean, it's been sort of this dynamic process all along, and here we are. I wish we weren't here, but my hope is that this is, again, a temporary measure we have to do while we get through this, you know, people traveling for Thanksgiving and Christmas and the holidays, flu seasons hitting at the same time, this youngest population now, well, the younger one, five to 11, can finally start getting vaccinated. People are getting their booster, so hopefully we'll be, like, coming out of this in a couple of months. But right now, it feels like we're sort of in the thick of it again, and this is a pretty easy mitigation measure to take, so.
I don't have anything to add, just to agree with everything that's been said. Fairly straightforward, simple thing to do. Okay. Jeff, do you have thoughts you want to share?
Doesn't matter what I think, does it? Really?
It does matter, yeah. I'm curious to know what you think.
So the numbers that I've heard, 97% of the cases are unvaccinated people. You wearing a mask isn't going to help that person.
But it's going to help her in my unvaccinated kids.
Maybe you're vaccinated, it's actually unvaccinated.
Doesn't mean that I don't have COVID right now, you know? I mean, it's true.
I mean, there's, there are lots of cases in vaccinated.
97% of the cases are unvaccinated.
So the number.
5% of the hospitalizations, 94% of the deaths in New Hampshire.
So I actually heard DCH just say, I thought I heard Commissioner Shtivenet say that 30% of hospitalized people right now actually are vaccinated. I think the numbers are actually, they're getting more tilted. And it's sort of like, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think that the, what do you make of, like, all the metric? I mean, hospitalizations, case numbers are all.
And deaths.
Yeah.
Are backup.
You collectively ignored it when they were going down, because you said it didn't matter.
They didn't say it didn't matter. It said that the guidance was still.
When I put up CDC numbers, you told me that I was not correct. In a meeting at the slasher.
And then I corrected the record and said that I was wrong, and saying you were incorrect. Yeah, I corrected the record.
But that's how we started, because you didn't like my numbers. I was wrong.
I mean, this, that's not really a fair statement to make there. I mean, why?
You said to me in a public meeting that I was wrong, and I had CDC numbers up on, on the screen. I gave you a handout.
I said one metric I thought was mistaken. I then realized the mistaken question of the month. Why are we rehashing that right now? Why is that relevant?
Because you're saying the metrics are going up, but when they were going down, you didn't want to hear it.
That's not true. I made a mistake.
It's exactly what happened at the time.
We can go back and watch. I made a mistake on one metric. I then later publicly apologized and said I was wrong. What else do you want?
I don't want anything.
Okay, so then what?
Just rehashing the history.
But at the time, the guidance was still from the state and the CDC that you should be masked. That was my point back then. What does that have to do right now with, with this conversation?
I'll say it again. Talking about the metrics going up, you ignored it when they were going down.
I didn't ignore it when they were going down. There were many factors at play. That is a gross oversimplification of that conversation. It really is. I don't appreciate that. It was a much more thoughtful and deep discussion than me just ignoring numbers. That's a totally unfair characterization. Can anyone else, like, jump in here? You were all there.
Well, and I would just point out that the mask mandate that we passed in, I don't even remember when it was, the spring, didn't last very long, because the numbers then did come down, and we revisited it, and we rescinded it. And the guidance changed. We definitely have a history here of looking at the data and following the data.
And the guidance. Right now, the CDC is saying, if you're in a county with high transmission, which we are, that you should be masked indoors in public. That's the guidance.
And we're not at the moment talking about, well, whatever, we're not even, to an extent, you're right. Like, you can say what you want. If four of us agree, then we'll pass something requiring masks in town buildings. But just to be clear, we're not talking about a mask mandate, townwide, as we were talking about before.
I was texting about it earlier this afternoon.
Okay, so I'm just saying that.
I'm not against.
It's a different situation than.
I'm not against protecting the case anywhere else. It was the first time.
Great.
Sort of like smear campaign right now, like accusing me of, of not caring in that early.
I think I stated facts that occurred at the time.
Okay, well, I don't think that what happened this spring is relevant, first of all. And second of all, I do think you just now were trying to sort of, like, impugn my character in a way, and I don't appreciate that, so. Okay, well.
Can, can I just call a question?
Yeah.
I don't think this is helping you.
No, I just want to be very clear for the record, though, that, you know, you saying, first of all, your opinion doesn't matter, isn't a great way to go into this, because it's not true. And second of all, I just don't appreciate this comment that, like, you know, we didn't care about the data in the spring, so why do we care now? Because that's just not true. So I just want to be very clear about that. So, okay, I'll make a motion that masks are now required in town buildings. Or, I'm sorry, town hall and slasher center.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, you had to sit through that. First up is, I believe we're doing TPL first with fire and ambulance. Is that right? Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. All right, so we're on page.
Do you want?
Do you want to start?
Sure.
We're doing, I'll do it.
Yep. So when I was preparing this budget, I tried to keep it as flat as possible. This is one of my most uncharacteristic years budget-wise. I had a lot of turnover this year. We got two retirements within a month of each other, leading up to the retirement. One of them, one of the folks had, out of his 720 hours of sick time, he used 648 hours of it on illness. Then he retired first of October with 240 hours of vacation on the books. Had another retirement 30 days later with 167 hours of retirement on the books and maternity leave. So the total of that, with just the leave, was probably around, it's over $30,000. That doesn't count any of the coverage that that took either, so that's probably why, well, it's more from the ambulance budget where the payroll comes from. Just wanted to note that when you see some of my numbers that are year-to-date from now, so. So I, I think I'll start with some of the high points here. Part-time wages, I'd like to put those up again. I requested it a couple of years, $35,000. I do understand the amount of spend this year. We were still in a, kind of quarantining from through July, so a lot of our training that we do regularly wasn't taking place. We were stepped back to training only on really necessary things, so that saved a lot of that money. And the ambulance calls are, are actually up quite a bit, and fire calls are pretty steady, so. So I would, like, that's the $5,000 increase I'm asking, because I need to, the wages for the call, fire department hasn't been adjusted since 2014, and something that I'm really looking to do. I've done a couple of surveys over the last couple of years. I've not done one yet this year, but we should be competitive in, in our pay. Moving down through, a lot of these items on the fire budget are, I hold off till the end of the year. Some of them have been spent now, the numbers, you're looking at probably year-to-date through September. So a lot of the contracts are coming due now, when some of them have actually been paid. See, capillary mutually compact, gone up slightly. Mutually compact does a pretty great job with trying to keep things as level as possible. That's like a $1.3 million budget done by, the equations are actually filled out. For that, they are based on your population and your evaluation, which puts Hopkinton about right in the middle of the 24 towns that are average. So on, on high entries, we take a pretty, we're, we're pretty much, like, we stay as steady as, as anybody. Some of the smaller towns take a, a smaller hit, and the bigger towns obviously take the larger ones. So that's gone up like 1.7%. That supplies our dispatching, and as well as mutually coordinator, there's a lot of work behind the scenes. The 430 lines of our equipment maintenance repair, our aerial testing, comp testing, fire hose testing. Some of this stuff was, wasn't able to be done last year due to COVID, so we did lose some hose and stuff hoping to replace. SCBA testing, all this stuff is mandatory, has to be done annually. Vehicle maintenance through September, that's the month of inspections, which is our biggest maintenance month, so. Without the town mechanic, we would never be able to keep our fleet maintained for $9,000. He's an incredible mechanic that, he can kind of fix anything, and, you know, even on the weekends or at night, he comes out and takes care of us well. Training and conferences, that usually works really well. Again, the Fire Academy is just starting to get back into having classes that learn online, as well as, we didn't do a lot of recruiting over the last couple of years, and we're starting to get into that now, because we're starting to see classes come. Again, another line that wasn't spent that much. These are subscriptions I have also, most of these come this time of year and towards the end. So we have paid through the NFPA, Fire Chiefs Association, some of the protocols and everything. Small tools and equipment that, we just didn't have a lot of fires and have a lot of breakage, and that buys a lot of our stuff for, that we use for around the station and everything. Have not bought any hose yet. Just worried about the bottom line of my budget, so.
Chief, do you think that year-to-date is going to go up by the, by the close of the year for that one?
Absolutely.
Yeah. You know, are you going to get close to that 7,600, do you think?
I hope not, but, but yeah, I'd, I'd love to buy and replace some hose. We started replacing a lot of our hose two years ago. A lot of it was from the early 90s, and it was still testing, but what they, what we were finding when they actually, they tested a couple lengths that failed, and then they actually would dissect it, and the pieces were coming delaminated. So what that does, it allows the hose to collapse inside, which you can't detect on a test, but what it does is really affect your flows. So and then it'll let, in a situation, it'll actually let the hose kink, which is definitely not helpful and very dangerous.
Chief, would these kind of materials even be available now because of supply chain issues?
Excuse me?
Would, would these type of materials be available to purchase now because of supply chain issues?
Yeah, actually, the hose that we buy comes right out of Jeffrey, New Hampshire, and they make it. It actually saves a lot on shipping, but yes, they have plenty of hose, and I can get it in a real short amount of time, one of the few things right now, actually.
Okay.
Radios, we do have a surplus in that. I have some bids on that. Again, I'm holding back. I'm holding off on those just because of some of the other issues that we've had in the budget. But I'm, I'm hoping to, I can actually pull the trigger on ordering some of that stuff really late, but I have some bids, and we, we definitely have a high need for radio replacements, which we do mostly through capital improvement. And here, this is, in the kind of business we do with the sensitive radios, occasionally we do break one or lose one, so.
And why does that account show a negative 4,200 year-to-date? Is that insurance?
No, we actually have, were wrongly charged last year, and they returned it. They, they found it in their accounting and returned their money, the money in this budget year, and it ended up in this line.
So if that credit was taken out of here, what amount would you have spent year-to-date here? An idea?
Well, if the credit was taken out, I would have to, I would probably, one of the radios that I want replaced, I probably wouldn't be able to do that. So a mobile runs just over 5,000, and a portable is about 4,500. And everyone in the trucks has a mobile and ambulances, and ambulances have two portals, engines have six, and the ladder in each tanker, and forestry all have one portable and one mobile. And all those radios were last replaced. We've been working on replacements. We replaced trucks that have money at the end of the year to get through those. But when we just bought Engine 2 last year, it was just under $30,000 for the radio package. So then that didn't include the installation. It was another 2,500.
Have there been more grants available?
Not for communication. The only one that I've seen was programming.
What about just in general, related to your departments?
What's that?
Any, any grants in general related to either fire or ambulance?
There's always grants available, whether you, you know, end up getting them or not.
I was particularly thinking of rescue equipment.
Sure.
I know we've talked about that in the past.
Yeah.
Where does that stand in terms of?
Well, we just did give some of the money last year, and some of the things that, I actually just got a, an ice rescue and water rescue boat delivered to the station last week that was ordered.
Covered by a grant?
No, it was out of the CIP.
Okay. And, and in the CIP, there's, at this point, $50,000 that's coming here, and that's sort of wondering if that could be replaced with grant money.
Well, we're going to try to get some of the grants. Our SCBA's are going to be, the AFG grants are where we got them the last time, so we're hoping that that's going to be a huge expenditure, and we're hoping to get that covered by the grant. And they'll be due in, like, three years. And some, and moving on, the, the building and maintenance, some of the, that work still being done, some of it scheduled. And now that line's been working pretty well between that and building to grounds to take care of our facilities. This is that, that 2.44% increase. And moving back, I did, skipped over that line, but it was the equipment and gear replacement. Again, that's where we're coming to a end of our 10-year cycle, which is the lifespan of the gear going to the NFPA. So gear had such an increase due to the materials it's built with. This year, we saw a 6% increase for October 1st, and there was another projected increase before the first of the year of 5% or 6%. So we did purchase that gear already. It's about a four-month working period for it, and I locked in for a price for it for next year, so. Even with the CIP and this, and I took out a set of gear to keep that, that line, where it actually went down a little bit. That's why it went down, because we were budgeting for three sets, and I went down to two sets, and it didn't really drop the bottom line on that very far. With the gear, like I said, a lot of that's for replacement, but we have some recruiting to do in the, in the near future, just because of the fact that we need about two or three people to stay even a year to keep them coming along as we, you know, as people retire or replace. And over the years, some of our history is, we like to replace some of our full-time people as we can with people that have come up through our call ranks or our part-time recruiting ranks as well.
Chief, similar question. I mean, it looks like year-to-date, it's pretty low. Is that going to be spent up towards?
Which one's that?
The equipment gear replacement?
Yeah, actually, I just got it today, this afternoon, when I checked the mail, so.
Yeah.
That'll look a lot different probably at the end of next week.
Are you going to be up near this $12,000 value there, do you think?
Getting back to your early comments about the part-time fire wages, the 5,000 increase, is that primarily due to your wanting to increase the hourly rate for the part-time people?
Yeah, they start at about $12 an hour right now, and I've been hearing from people that I've been interviewing, oh, thank you, but I can go to Dunkin' Donuts and make 50.
Okay, so we've certainly heard that issue numerous times.
Retention is just something that's so important these days. We're seeing that on our full-time staff, you know, as, as they age and retire. It's a very competitive market out there. There's a lot of swapping going on throughout the whole state. Here, probably in everything else, but there's a huge shortage of people. There's a physical, they call it a CPAD test, a candidate physical ability test, and they put, the failure rate on it this year was just higher than normal for whatever reason, and they didn't have as many applicants, so. I know the Fire Academy is working diligently on trying to just solve some of those prices, or some of those prices, but, you know, Manchester and Nashua are some, a couple of the biggest departments in the state. They were actually trying to lure lateral transfers, which means they worked at other fire departments throughout the state to come work there, and they were waving some of their own, like, swims and runs, hiring 14 or 20 at a time. So they really put a hurt on, and then the trickle-down effect of that is, you know, then that opens up in some of the medium-sized departments like Terry, places like that, which have probably 17 to 20 guys on shift. You know, some of those guys move around, and then people fill their spots, so it's just, and then no new coming people that, you know, are qualified. You get a town like Hopkinton where you have two people on, which is the minimum staffing for an ambulance. You know, you can't, it's, it's really difficult to hire somebody that is entry-level, and, you know, like a basic EMT and a fire 2, which is the standard to get into, into the service, so.
And by the end of this calendar year, you expect your expenditures to be basically in line with the budget?
Definitely. I've been really conservative since the summer to, to what I had told you at the first part, you know, with the, the sick time that I had, the maternity leave, the two retirements with a lot of vacation time. Of course, when you work someplace 20 years, you end up on the higher end of the pay scale. So, I mean, some of those unforeseen, unbudgeted-for expenses are just, they're crippling, you know? We just have no mechanism. We've told you in the past, you know, that these are going to happen, and unfortunately. You know, we just have no mechanism, we've told you um in the past, you know, that these are gonna happen and unfortunately for me this year, a lot. I ran into a lot of those those issues all in one year, and so so I put myself on a real um stringent. Um, you know, expenditure. Program for to to keep some money so that I don't overspend the bottom line.
Thank you for doing that.
So, I mean, fortunately, you know, a lot of the things I budget for throughout the year, um. I can wait for them and and get them at the end, which doesn't, I'd love to have them in service now, but, you know, uh, things just aren't coming in fast and. We should pull some of those ships in from the west coast.
And the east coast.
Alright. So that includes my part of the fire budget. Move on to the ambulance, um. Full time moves around, like I said, we um in the last three months, we've done pre do of our six full time employees, they're they're new, um. We did get some real quality employees, um. This time, once uh started today, he came through our ranks, um. And he uh was working in a department, one of our neighboring towns. And and then he brought another uh person with him that starts tomorrow, was a paramedic. He's gonna be a nice addition to our apartment along, you know, when you lose cornerstones or your people, your um. Your workforce that have been here for twenty years and stuff and kind of been a constant, um. You know, that's a scary thought, you get, they end up with a lot of duties and um. So we've been doing a lot of work to get those duties, you know, covered by other people, and then we've been short staffed, we've had a part time. Coverage since May, we have an employee we couldn't fill, we couldn't fill his position all summer, um. Then we were able to get a firefighter A M T from another community that um has like twelve years experience, he's really fitting in well, got a great personality. Real good work ethic, strong skills, so I feel really happy about that and um, you know, checking the backgrounds on the. On the other um paramedic, he comes really highly recommended and um. So. I think we really lucked out to be able to uh, you know, secure that kind of experience and qualifications. That's great. Good to hear, and it's a, it's always nice to get new people, they come with a new enthusiasm and new ideas and, you know, a look from a different place and. So I'm excited about the future here. So, moving down our part time, um wages are, we're expended on those right now, um as well as our overtime. Our training and conferences, we did get through some of the uh paramedic refreshers this year that we need to and uh A M T refreshers, next year will be a. Another heavy year on that, um. A lot of those, like even mine, this this past year I did online, so that saves a lot of time, I did it in between, a lot of it from home and a lot of it. You know, in between tasks at work and when. Some of those, and they were still, they were online, but they were still um live courses with an instructor and everything else, so. May have changed some of the ways, paramedics don't um, will never do that, it's a forty hour refresher at um. Concord Hospital, we do the rapid sequence intubation and all of that training, which uh we used to be one of like three in the state that. Did that, there's more more services taking that now, but pretty uh integral procedures, so something we're really proud of. And and do, but it takes a lot of work to keep up with that. Um overtime wages, again, those are expended, um we did do some adjusting, because um the formula that we were using um before the. The actual um, the number had gone up like almost five dollars an hour since we had worked that number a few years ago. So I wanted to have some some better numbers. And this was a extraordinary year for um for coverage and overtime. Just because of some of the things that happened, that sick time and then vacation, you're gonna have vacations anyways. Retirements, uh, all those numbers stayed the same this year as far as the percentage. The increase was because last year's percentage of thirty two point nine nine percent was um. Only for half a year, went up a couple, two and a half percent or whatever it was. Ambulance one and two repairs, again, six thousand dollars and uh isn't, isn't that a lot, but we have a um well maintained fleet. And I do have um some tires for both ambulances that are that are coming due on this fall. And they're scheduled, they're scheduled to uh have those replaced pending into the winter.
Chief, can I, can I back you up to medical services?
Yep.
It, you, looks like you got that in the thirty five hundred in the last couple of years, looks like you're you're well under that. Is there any particular reason to bump it up?
Yeah, I actually, um. Well, it stayed the same, we just haven't spent a lot of it, I actually have uh. Three physicals that we haven't paid for yet.
Okay.
New employees and stuff, and then um every other year you need to have one for a medical release that take classes.
Yeah.
As well as the uh the guideline following the FPA. Every couple of years for a fifteen eighty two physical, which is pretty involved for a firefighter.
Okay.
Radio repairs, we have um bought some other parts for, we lost a couple antennas, which are a few hundred dollars a piece. Occasionally they get whacked from the top of the ambulance and go, but a service call is about three hundred dollars just if they don't do anything. Comp star billing is based on um. Six percent of every call that's sent in for billing, um. And just to give you a little bit of background on um this year's calls, last year we did twelve hundred and three calls, um this afternoon we just completed twelve hundred and ten. So, we're gonna be up probably, I'm I'm guessing around one hundred and twenty five, one hundred and fifty calls from last year.
What's the difference between calls and transports, is some some?
Well, we can't bill, if we come to your house and um we. We come in and um evaluate you and you decide you don't wanna go to the hospital, we can't bill you for that call. If we transport you, we can bill you by the level of your call, mileage. Basically what we do, so.
Why is that?
Why can't I bill you to come?
Yeah.
Um, the, it just, it's not allowed by uh Medicare law and everything now, so.
Yeah, okay, I'm curious, I was just in a hearing about an ambulance bill, this came up, so I was just curious to hear.
Yeah, and there's been some talk as far as um that goes, that I've heard that, you know, eventually, because we do a lot of diabetic emergencies or something, we can fix people in the house. They're well versed in how to um take care of themselves, but at the same time, let it get away from them, but we get them back to be in uh alert and conscious and. Thinking well and, you know, they can sign off and then there's really not a lot that they could do for them, other than that in the hospital anyway, so. A good percentage of them don't wanna go, once you get them back, they know how to maintain their, their levels, that's just an example of a call that you.
And the the twenty four dollars per call from CompStar, is that an estimate or is that a fixed price?
Yep.
Has that gone up?
Nope.
No? Okay.
Figurative contracts, yeah, that that they're due actually um in November, so we'll be paying for that as soon as we uh have that maintenance done. That's just the price, I mean, they're. They're about a thirty five thousand dollar monitor, which I'm hearing right now is about fifty thousand dollars, so. Along with that contract comes, if if they do break during the course of the year, they send us a box and a label, we put it in there, they fix it, send it back, so. Pretty good. Equipment and maintenance, um. We actually have some of that stuff sent out right now, that um our IV pumps and um. Some of our, those those go all the way to Oregon, so it's kind of a, and they have to be maintained once a year, make sure that they're accurate and. Everything, that also includes a lot of the other equipment on the uh ambulances with changing batteries or uh. You know, if you end up having a. A broken uh part or whatever, so fortunately, a lot of our um equipment has been replaced over the last so many years, so. Again, conferences and training, I haven't really had um. A lot of ability to send people to like EMS classes, just due to uh not being available. There's been a few uh people that have gone through online classes, but those aren't for everybody. Again, they're starting to become available, but we'll see how long they last, kind of goes back to the discussion you had before I sat up here. Diesel, um. There is a little bit of a cushion there, I can't really predict the price of the fuel, it's been, it's been pretty low, it's been pretty steady, we've been paying about um. Free or uh, we've been paying probably about a dollar less per gallon than what we budgeted to whether, but. Get a windstorm across the Gulf and that all changes in an instant, it goes up overnight and comes down over six months. Uniforms and uh safety, I can assure you that that's far, that's a lot further along than what you see reflected on this budget, but um. And that we never usually have much to, much uh problem spending that, as well as the medical supplies, um. We did replace just recently um child car seats and stuff, so. Those are pretty expensive, those are something that we um tried to work for, work through all year to uh to buy out of that line. We do get some supplies out of the hos- out of the hospital, but all of our masks and gowns and everything that we did with COVID, um. At the beginning, last year, we ended up putting this up a little bit just due to that fact, and we're able to get them now, but at the same time, we're using them a lot more, so.
Do we have any more state or federal money to use towards that PPE stuff?
Um, I know the state was, where they were giving us stuff at for a while, which they stopped doing.
Yeah.
Um. And some of the stuff was, I mean, I don't know where they got it, but. I certainly wouldn't wanna be, uh, I was trying not to send people, you know, they were giving us gloves because they were hard to get, um. We were going through twice as many gloves because putting them on your fingers and rip the wrists off.
Yeah.
I took them on a service, I just, I mean, people weren't getting COVID through their hands, but at the same time, we're still dealing with bloodborne pathogens and.
Right.
Other things that could be sold through your skin, so, or cut.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I agree with you that the giveaway stuff, the quality was really suspect, but if there's any more state or federal. Monies we can tap into for the medical supplies, sure, I do a little bit else, obviously.
Yep.
Um, do you, do, I don't know if you or Neil know if there's any more of that money available to the town or to the department?
There may be some little pockets here and there.
Okay.
Still that.
Yeah, it certainly, I mean, it'd certainly be easy to pull those figures together for what we spent on uh. On some of those items, the PPE items and. So this budget was up um three point five one percent, um. Again, that comes, a lot of that is um overtime and the refresher courses and those those increases were mostly due to. Recapating revenues.
So, chief, just like most of our departments, uh, and I think you've done a great job in in putting a budget together that was bare bones, let's say. Um, and what I've been doing is unfortunately, uh, because I don't see much to be cut on the expense side. Looking at revenues, if there are estimates there that could be higher, and I'm looking at uh the the uh. Insurance income from ambulance charges, where you're projecting that transports go up fifty, by by fifty?
Calls went up fifty, the transports, I have two addresses in Warner, we've been to a hundred times, last time I checked, between the two addresses and um. The one that that we've, you know, basically gone for lipocyst, has not been transported once, so.
Okay, where I got the fifty from was the the CompStar billing service went from seven twenty five to seven seventy five. And and those are all uh for transport.
Yep.
So, when I look at the uh. The ambulance, the insurance income for those transports, it it increased from a budget of three hundred thousand to three hundred and ten thousand. And it seems like if you're adding fifty more, it should be going up more than ten thousand.
Yeah, like I said, you know, a couple of, I mean, I can run the numbers where you can and uh and see how it all all looks when we finish out the year, but um. You know, a lot of that, when we, when we just go and we pick somebody up from the floor and put them back in bed, we can't bill them for that or whatever. Um, but I usually break those those numbers down in the fall anyways to take a look at them.
So I I guess then, from what you're saying, would probably be.
And the level of the, you know, the other thing about the the revenue side, um. We bill at a BLS level, which we basically, basically like support, um, a lot of times, those folks probably could have gone in their personal vehicle. So, that call we're billing, billing around six hundred dollars for plus some mileage. You get to an ALS one, which means you've done like an IV, put a twelve lead on, something to that effect, uh, like one ALS procedure. Brings you up to around eleven hundred, and then an ALS two is multiple drugs and multiple procedures, which puts you up, um. I wanna say it's just under a couple thousand dollars for.
And and how were those charges determined?
So, um, when I became fire chief, I adjusted them, um. We were billing at Medicare rate, which was, and I put our rate up to one hundred and twenty five percent over Medicare rate.
And would that have been the case for all of uh this calendar year twenty twenty one? So I I I guess just, uh, if you could provide an update of the year to date revenues for the ambulance uh revenues?
Yeah, I would. I think there's a revenue part later, which Devin, Neil handles the revenue.
Yeah, it was just that you were here.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, that brings up transportation. We need to call, follow the ways. First, okay. Hi, Dan.
Hello.
Thanks for coming in.
What are we doing first, public works?
Highway.
Forty three eleven.
Fifty eight, page fifteen.
Okay.
Hit it.
You made that?
Yeah.
So, you want me to line by line or just lay increases? I have a lot of budgets, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that, any significant?
So, the forty three eleven, I talked to you last year about getting rid of our uniform company, um. Well, they they changed their tune rather quickly when I said it was dropping, and they lowered their price dramatically. So we're back well on the budget and it's actually cheaper to do uniforms over the.
Is there anyone else that you can threaten?
Sometimes it can, there is.
Okay.
So that's, that's the the change they, that's, that's a. So that's that's the the change there. That's that's a reduction in in cost, actually. Any other questions on the forty-three eleven? No? Awesome. Okay, the first increase is the five percent in the shim and the paving line that. Previous board agreed to over. What's the time? That that increase. Um, the gas and oil, diesel fuel, have gone up a little bit. I'm hoping it's enough. We go through a lot of diesel and oil and gasoline. Uh, the big increase is the salt budget. We went from forty-nine dollars and fifty cents a ton up to seventy-two dollars a ton. If I'm going to keep the level of service we have, that's.
Could you repeat those?
It went from forty-nine fifty a tonne. Seventy-two dollars.
Do we know, is that like supply chain related or is it?
I would be more than willing to bet that's a slight. When it comes in on the big ship. You can buy salt from. Midwest, but it's it's usually way more. It's a little better salt, but it's not worth my mind.
Have you ever, and this is not necessarily a budget, could be a budget question, but you ever dealt with other? Horns and DI searchers?
You've tried calcium. Um, we've got liquid calcium. We actually still do some liquid calcium.
I don't try, I remember seeing those that.
Yeah, so we generally only use that when the temperature. Drops below eighteen degrees, that's when the salt really stops working. Um, we generally spray it on sand.
Yeah.
Um, to help the sand stick to the road, it doesn't. Salt somewhere around twenty degrees up to twenty. Seven, eight-ish, somewhere around there, then we'll spray it on the salt to help activate the salt. Thankfully, we don't get too many.
It's really, really cold. Yeah. I was gonna say, I bet that's not cheaper.
A lot of, a lot of um. Some towns and the state does a lot of liquid brine stuff. We'd have to transfer everything back.
Yeah.
People will try to talk me into it, just having one truck to, I can't have one truck to spray all the major roads in town. To me, it's not.
It's not practical. Yeah.
We use salt very sparingly, um, because we don't want a storm, apply it at the right time, right temperature to get the maximum effect.
What would um, you said that if you if we want the same level of service, that, you know, this is the cost.
So the level of service we have, we get compliments all the time about how someone coming home from. New York City. Has a hard time getting up at Diamond Hills. And they get to their house, like, it's on top of the highway as they drive.
Yeah.
So if if you don't want that level of service where people are struggling to be at home or whatever, then you can surely drop it.
Okay. That's kind of what I assumed the difference was, but um, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Dan on sand. Uh, there's no expenditure listed in our report so far as.
I haven't got the bill yet.
Okay. So you anticipate spending something in the neighborhood of twenty-five?
Um, it should be under twenty-five.
Um, the other item I want to ask you about, and this came up uh the benefit of the rest of the select board. This came up at the budget committee. There is, let's say, certainly a concern or a thought that interest rates are going to be going up significantly in the near future. And so some individuals are pushing, maybe we should borrow eight million dollars or thereabouts now to address roads. And what I want to ask you is. If we did bond, let's say, a million dollars. Could you get contractors to do roads, you know, or how many years might it take to spend the money?
So I I could more than likely get contractors. I don't think that'll be a problem. If you wanted me to do it, the work to save money. Just for an example, Bright Hill is three point two miles long. It's going to take me three years to do that. Well, that's where we're getting where contracted come in in like two months and probably. In stages. And I did prepare for this because I heard.
Yes, I know you have.
I gave I gave Neil some paperwork, but I always read it to him aloud. I went through today because I found out last night this might come up, so. For rebuilding. We have a total of seventy-five thousand three hundred and thirteen feet of roads to rebuild for fourteen point two six miles. Uh, to to pave a three-inch base with a two-inch top, which is what I do, uh, looking at three million five hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred and six. The ground will put under that before you pave, we're looking at five hundred and six thousand. For total of four million eighty-eight thousand eight dollars. But like I said up top, um, that is rough estimation, does not include the time that we have into it. Equipment, where, fuel or culverts that are going to be needed to be replaced. Which whenever you rebuild a road, you're you replace the culvert, unless it's. Either plastic pipe or uh concrete pipe that's in good shape. The next page is the Schuman overlay. We have eight point nine nine miles for a cost of one million three hundred fifty-five thousand point seven dollars. On the last page, these are very rough numbers based on the Bright Hill culvert and sticky and tearside. All those culverts that need to be done or should be done soon. East Pentecost and Broad Cove are actually bridges. They're so big. They're not on the red list yet, but they are starting to rust. The metal pipes. And they're big. So the total for all those culverts and bridges, we're looking around two point six million.
So so your total amazingly.
Eight million point three thousand thirty-five dollars. But that's without me. That's without my guys' time. The 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 big culverts and the bridges, I I can't, I don't have the the manpower.
I'm just trying to get to, yeah. It's eight mil- it's eight million.
So you can take the, you can take the the four million, say, for a road rebuilding. Take that number and probably double it. That's how much a contractor is going to cost. That's just what I found with, but if we had the eight million, your guys would be all out for three years trying to get all this done.
No.
That's just. I can only, I can only do a mile road a year. I am maxed out. I just did two roads that were around two thousand feet each. They are fourteen miles, just on the first page. And it took me all summer to do those two roads. They are finally paved and.
Ken, if you don't mind me asking, where did the budget committee come with eight million? It sounds like we have a much bigger issue.
I think the eight million came from a previous one of these that I did about three or four years ago.
Yes.
On the new depth.
So you're saying page one, you basically have to double it if we went with contractors.
Yeah.
But you are saying that you think you could get contractors.
I could get contractors.
Because that 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 surprises me with uh all of the federal stimulus type money coming in.
It hasn't come out yet. But right now I can get contracted. Next year.
Well, because a bond wouldn't be approved till a town meeting, and we wouldn't have the money until after that. I would imagine that the federal money would be flowing. Yes, no question about it.
I'm just saying, right now I could get a contract.
And for the other two pages, if. Went with contractors, would again, the numbers be doubled?
The second page is just me calling up the paving company and saying, this is what I have for roads to shim and overlay. Um, we didn't we didn't go in and change any culverts that need to be changed before we did that. I wouldn't hire that. We could do that. Like um Bright Hill from the big culverts that we've just done to Pentecost Road, we could do that in public. Small culverts, not a huge deal, it's the big ones.
And the third page, two point six million, is that a contractor cost of?
Yes. That's a rough estimate based on what we've done so far. But that also does not include any.
Any, any what? Sorry. Oh, okay.
Did you just say that you can do the Schuman overlay on Pentecost Road in a week?
Replace the culvert.
Overplace the culvert. Longest one on here and.
I guess just for, again, for the benefit of the the select board, uh. This discussion really. Had been building to an extent uh empathetically in prior meetings, and then last Wednesday. It got more attention, let's say, uh because of the concern about interest rates and potentially higher inflation and costs. I I think that uh. Some representatives in budget committee will be going to the CIP committee to talk about the the concept. Of a the large bond. I've initially been very opposed to it because I, and I was surprised by Dan's comment that he thought he could get contractors. And that was my main concern, that we probably couldn't get contractors for a number of years, so we'd be just paying interest in principle on an eight-million-dollar bond. That we couldn't do anything. But now I'm going to have to somewhat.
Softly tied to bridge quotes, costs have already decreased dramatically, I'm sure. The stimulus money hits or the the infrastructure money hits, all those contractors are going to raise their rents.
Yes, I I agree with you, Jeff, and uh, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to. You know, rather than do a bond now, let's wait several years and see if inflation tapers down again and uh. Interest rates may go down again and and the rates contractors charge may go down. Uh, or they may not. I I know, I don't have crystal. But it's just that at this point, it's just to to let you know.
Man, I think I think we could vote on a bond and then not close a deal. Unless we had contractors lined up and a project or projects to spend it on. So then we wouldn't be paying interest on money we've been loaned.
And if we delay, then one of the concerns of the budget committee is interest rates are going to go up in turn.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know, I don't think anybody knows what's better.
It's a lot to get a bond pass and then say I want.
Yeah, that's a hard sell.
Yes.
Yeah.
Especially with the uh starting point for a tax rate increase we're looking at.
That's not even a make-up presentation.
I uh, I'm not sure about if warrant article for an eight-million-dollar bond.
I'm not just going to be eaten by a terrorist discussion, so I'm either.
That 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 that's certainly true, um, and. I I I had told the uh budget committee that I I would ask Dan these questions. And like I said, I got a different answer than I was expecting. But that's, that's fine. Who knows? Yeah, and and I I appreciate that.
Just listening to our.
The Webster slideboard is actually up soon. Two minutes.
Okay, um, in that case, I will uh. I will, that terminates my questions today. Thanks, Dan. Thanks for all you.
Just let's discuss it a little bit more later. The bond question. Discussion ahead.
Benefit saves you over the long term. The impact it has on a hourly basis, I don't want our operating budget to be decimated because we're passing. Six or seven hundred thousand dollars. Bond payments which are locked into.
I I think regardless, eight is way too big of a bond, but.
Yeah. I have to remember that just in for next calendar year. Our debt service cost is going up two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, who's one of the major drivers. We have no control at this point. Yeah, so think of what eight.
No, no, I'm not going to think about it. All right.
Over.
No.
Did that work?
Yes, thank you. Back to video, there we go. So unfortunately, we don't have uh everything set up as I would prefer. Uh, but we do have all of the board here watching, and you are projected on the screen as well, which is just to my left. And uh as we decide that we want to talk, uh we'll play musical chairs in front of this computer for you.
Sounds like the way of the world these days.
So. Okay. We're talking. Transportation right now.
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, so the the first increase we we get to is the trash, transport and disposal. Um, we had to sign a new contract to care more about, and the price has gone up. With everything, so the proposed budget has gone up to match the increase. Um, next is the demolition tipping fees. We're finding we don't have enough to cover the amount of demo that we have to get rid of it for this year. Um, so we're increasing that once again. There's a lot of demos coming in. And hopefully the new price increases, we can talk about that, it helps alleviate that issue. That's all I hope for increases.
Our, um, in terms of the, uh, uh, offsetting revenues, uh, transfer station commercial is the one I'm particularly interested in initially. What revenue line item does that tie to?
That is. It's on page seven. 404, oh, three.
Commercial.
And actually, it's at 120, and I think it can be increased to 140.
Okay, good, now you're talking.
I figured I'd make you happy before.
Well, that's, that's one, um.
The, the actual as of right now is, is 140 or 464. So that is a comfortable increase there.
The year-to-date number you made?
Yes.
Is 144?
Is 140 or 64.
Okay, so, and that's through 10 months?
That's through 10 and a half months.
So we can discuss later whether or not to actually increase the, uh, the revenue estimate higher than, higher than 140. And similarly, recycling receipts. Through nine months, it's almost 35,000, we're only estimating 30,000 for next year. Is there a reason for that, or can we boost that 30,000 up also?
If you look at the history and where things have been, that's the real reason for it. You wanna do revenues?
Well, it's just while, while Dan's here and why, where the, uh, the Webster board is here, and I'm sure they have similar concerns about that. And, um, the, uh, and picking on Webster, the, the reimbursement from Webster is staying at 95,000. Why is that not going up three and a half percent similar to what the operating budget is?
That probably should go up to 110,000. It's, it's 25% of the expenses minus the revenue.
And if I might ask Webster a question, um, what is your understanding of the status of the, uh, the solo way of the transfer station and when we can anticipate getting revenues?
Sure. Um, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the, uh, the short version of all of that is they are still in their planning phase. We are expecting more in the civil engineering style, uh, the first quarter or so of this coming year. Then they'll be doing their SEC process and application following that. Uh, and then they hope to be constructing the year after in 2023 and operational 2024. Uh, so the pilot agreement, uh, that you have signed and that we have previously signed, uh, has payments starting for the construction phase, so you may see some of that, uh, 2023 would be my guess, and then operational normal pilot payments in 2024. Assuming that everything goes according to how they hope it does.
Oh, oh, great, thank, thank you for that, and that was about what I was anticipating hearing. Okay. Dan, back to you, and looking at the CIP, uh, do we need to replace trailers one and two in 2025?
So, you're supposed to get trailer one, I don't know which one it was, this year. Because the price of steel being what it is, I did not order it because the price the estimate they gave me went up over 10 grand. They seem to think that the price of steel is gonna come back down at the, after the, the first of the year. So I was hoping to wait until then and maybe wait till after town meetings and buy both trailers at once and save money. If we're getting buying two trailers, they'll cost a better deal. Hopefully the steel price will be down. If the prices of steel are not down, uh, we may end up only getting one trailer for now. Um, because there won't be enough money to buy one trailer from each. But despite that, said by two, we'll come and ask for the rest of the money to buy the house when we're out. Um, I've also adjusted the, the packer, the 10-yard packer, which will be the ram that's in the building and pushes the dump into the trailer because the quota gap was a lot more than. And Webster, I believe, is aware of all that.
So, uh, Webster, again, uh, the question from, uh, me would be, uh, you're talking about the better deal for the second trailer and, uh, then the additional charge for the upgrade of the quote on the, the packing system for unloading. Can we get, uh, full quotes of that and timelines so that we can put all of that stuff ahead of time in our CIP and, and plan for it with our, uh, reserve and trust funds?
I did send, well, I talked to someone on the floor, I don't remember who it was, Frank Webster, about all these changes and stuff. But can we get you the quote if you'd like to see them?
Uh, it appears that that is our town administrator, so he will get that all to us then and ask you if he needs anything.
Okay.
So are all of those costs 25%?
The stuff that you see in front of you for CIP is, is our percentage.
Is our percentage?
75%.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll give up the floor if anybody else wants to have questions.
Dan is the oh, this is a solid waste question.
We're not good, but we're done.
We're the best they can.
I know you are.
Sure, we solve this first. So solid waste is really the engineering fees that we pay nobody. So, uh, it's up a thousand dollars for next year. There's always added, uh, testing required, especially as PFAS is coming on board, so.
So is that another area that we potentially be able to get some federal funding for? Talking about PFAS and the, uh.
Well, possibly, possibly, but, um, the landfill closure had, had initially had a DS loan. So, and that is all paid and done, so. But certainly we can check on the PFAS. I know they are looking at PFAS, but probably not. They're looking at sites, not necessarily where it exists and it's being monitored anyways.
No, it's worth looking.
And that's it there.
Can you, Neil, the increase in the hazardous waste, Dan, is that just the charge that's passed on?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's usage, okay.
How much is being, being used?
Okay.
When it was seven people who arrived that.
Okay, okay, got it.
And then community.
Any questions on community wells, because I have no increases at all, so. We had some home failures and stuff in Kent.
As I see that you are moving on to, uh, community wells and such, I believe that is the end for us here in Webster, so thank you, and, uh, we'll look forward to letting you know through our town administrator.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't know who it falls under, if it's you, Dan, or not, the, uh, emergency generator at the high school.
Well, it's under emergency management.
So that's on the police?
Um.
I'm just wondering.
That's a discussion we'll have to have because it isn't really anywhere.
I, I was just curious, I don't think I've seen that before.
Uh, well, we've maintained it out of, um, other areas, so, but we've maintained the generator since the beginning.
Okay, so it was just that where it was booked.
Yeah.
I said, okay.
Of sewer.
Heads up, Ken did tell me he's probably not gonna do this community wise in too much longer. So when he does give it up, they're gonna just transfer it to Stan.
Great.
Yeah.
Would that require any kind of a, a budgetary change or?
I, I think we can make it work within.
Sam does work seven days a week, so we wanna keep working on options to make that reasonable. We don't wanna lose Sam.
I don't want anybody. Work.
Yeah.
Okay, so the professional services has gone up some. Um, Sam and I have talked and we're gonna start, uh, scoping the sewer system for issues. I don't believe it's ever been done, so it'll be interesting to see what's happening. We are giving some groundwater infiltration into the system, uh, which is why electricity has gone up with all this, right, we've had, has increased the demand for electricity. I believe I just took, just there are two birds and one stone, I think.
No, so the, I have been confused, I didn't understand the lagoon oxygen increase of demand, uh, so that's due to precipitation?
Yes, return of rains, the levels and all is again. A whole lot of add-ons being added on to the system.
Online internet rates going up?
I believe it with everything.
Yeah.
I think these are accurate costs as we've switched over to you have a good handle of what those costs truly are.
And in terms of how imminent the, uh, uh, the sledge removal, uh, project would be, you know, what are you thinking, man?
We should stay right on track for the CIP schedule date. Sam seems to think we should stay on that schedule. It sends you out in a boat.
I, I think Blue Cell's work is gonna do that.
And as a refresher, so the income that's into the operating budget equals the total amount of this budget plus the, the, what isn't in this budget is some benefits, employee benefits that the precinct pays half. So, uh, the sewer rates were increased, so the sewer fund will take in more money and that fund will build up. But it doesn't affect the operating budget because that doesn't get, only what we actually expend gets transferred. So sewer is a total self-funding self-funding budget.
The revenues that we'll be receiving from sewer are projected to be received from sewer.
As I just said, that's the budget plus the share of the benefits from the precinct is the revenues that go in. Any additional revenues go into the sewer fund. Because you're looking at the operating budget, so this is only the money that comes into the operating budget from the sewer. So the rate increase in the sewer fund, that money remains at the sewer. But can be expended or slightly.
Sewer maintenance.
So, in the CIP, uh, breakdown as it shows currently, uh, in 2023, we'd have to be putting in $110,000 to cover the sledge removal project. Now, how much above the, uh, uh, op- operating, uh, of, of the operating revenues are gonna be used to offset the, uh, appropriations in this, uh, sledge removal CRF?
So we will know that better as we're just finishing the first cycle of the new bill. And that would be our, but our estimation was to raise an additional $35,000 of, in sewer rates in a year. So you'll have, by the time this is done, you'll have two years, so 70,000 of that very rough numbers should be able to come from the sewers.
So then theoretically, that would mean 2023, the amount that, uh, the appropriation from all of the taxpayers would only be 35,000 again.
That could drop, yeah.
Ball.
Yes.
Thank you. Don't have any more questions on this for Dan.
First that one.
That's what matters.
Again, the only increase is
75.
The equipment cases and contracts matters because the boilers are coming out for inspection.
77, sorry. You said that one time, Dan, sorry.
It's the, the, the cost of the boiler inspection.
Isn't the pellet boilers that don't always operate very well?
Right.
Yeah.
It's all.
Do we get them all?
I think we've got them all, I think we did.
I guess I have one revenue question, seeing Bonnie here, um, and that is the, uh, pay-by-bag revenues. It is, I believe, I guess it is 30,000. But that's down a lot, and I'm just wondering, you know, why that is. For 2023. Yeah.
All right, so some of this we appropriate from the pay by back fund is what, what, what is in there? Basically, at town meeting time and out of there, that rep, that what's appropriated pays for the bags about $30,000 a year. And all the additional revenue goes into the budget. So there, as we looked at this, the revenue hasn't changed as drastically as it looks. The auditors carried over a receivable from that fund for funds that weren't transferred, I think, two years ago. That we were unaware of till we just got the audit. So I asked Deb about it and she wasn't aware of it, although she'd done the journal entries. So, so what's being carried is that 190,000 is due to the general fund. So that amount should be transferred, and I'll confirm this with the auditors too. And then this is the remaining amount that can be used for the budget. So this is like a one-year blip of a lower amount to get that funding. The auditors, I, I think they shouldn't make it a receivable because, just because it was appropriated, it doesn't have to be expended. So the assumption was, at least on my part, that it wasn't carried over. So, so they were showing that this money is due, so that's why that comes out. It means we quote extra revenue previously. Does that make sense?
Not really, but what impact does it have on the fund balance at the end of this year, this current calendar?
Uh, it's already, that money's already in the fund balance, so it shouldn't make any diff, it shouldn't make any difference to the fund now. One year. So it's because the, well, the fund balance you're talking about is the undesigned fund balance. And this, the, this would be the designated fund balance in this fund. So, so it doesn't change the undesigned.
So because of the auditors' fine, we're, we lose out on $100,000.
It, it's because it's already been booked. Because even though it wasn't transferred, it was booked as revenue two years ago. The auditors are coming next, this, end of this week. So I'll walk through it now, just to make sure we're in the right place. But I want to make sure that, that receivable gets taken care of. And then exactly what we do. So the anticipation is we can take care of the receivable, have another 60,000 remaining, 30 of which is revenue here, 30 is available to buy backs.
Okay, once you walk it through with the auditors, you can tell us next month.
Yeah, I can, I can write it out. But that's, that's why.
Is it a, is it a decrease in actual revenues, or is it just something that shows up on our books this way?
This change is because of how it should have done the books. If you look back, only thirty-two was booked, only thirty-two was transferred, but in the books, they trans, they did a receivable for the whatever amounts remaining that year. So, and they, they had done that. So.
So what?
So, so in 2000, it was, 2020, there was a lot less revenue. Because we weren't using bags during COVID and we weren't selling bags. So that year, there was substantially less revenue.
So if we were a year from now, if everybody at this table was doing this again, this 30,000 number would probably be 80,000 again?
Eighty or ninety, it should be, if everything's basically back to normal.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Can I just, maybe I'm just being dense about it. So is there a $50,000 revenue shortfall because of this? Or is, am I a misunderstanding?
Um. Well, because we looked at what was remaining in the account when we determined each year what was budgeted and transferred. And so back when not all the money was transferred, it's the difference between the pool accounting of it and the actual cash. So yes, we put in too much one of those years because there wasn't a realization that that money had already been out.
But that, that money that we put in too much of is now in the designated fund balance.
Right, so there's enough money in this fund to clean this up now.
Okay.
To make the transfer, do away with the receivable.
Okay.
And it will make sure that it gets accounted for. If, if they're going to do a receivable, then we need to, there's no reason to do a receivable. The money should be transferred because the money is.
The money's there.
So I'm, I'm.
We're not having to raise an extra $50,000, though, to cover, that's what.
Yeah, the money's, the money's in there. It's really just an accounting thing.
Okay.
And, and the revenue was substantially less in 2020, but other than that, it has stayed.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was hoping.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I don't have anything else for Dan.
Bonnie. I think Bonnie, do you have something for Dan or?
Can I just say that I promised Dan I would come to the budget area with your cheerleader program? In the highway department, help us out on smoothie roads and stormwater repairs if you desperately need it. And so.
I appreciate that.
That's good to hear. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Dan. D W.
Yeah.
But I totally don't understand.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Phenomenal work. A lot.
Yeah, you said revenues were fine. You didn't want to discuss.
Yeah. Thank you, Bonnie. Thanks.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Let me just walk through revenues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As well do it.
Yeah.
By my line.
Yeah.
Land use change tax and timber tax yield tax largely end the year in basically the same place every year. Sometimes one's up, one's down, but the 20, the 20 and 20 seem pretty payment in lieu of taxes. I did reach out to St. Methodius and they are finalizing their stuff and should be back. I reminded them of the deadline that we needed to get them in here. So Mike reached out to the board. They were getting some final stuff and some pot plants and stuff and then back. So that's the main reason this is lower than it is not knowing where that's going to end up. Revenues, you can put anything you want in here, but when it comes to the end of the year, if you don't have the revenues and you set the tax rate, then you have to raise the tax rate. So that's why it should be as accurate, in my opinion, as accurate and on the conservative side. We've done very well telling people at town meeting, this is what the tax rate will be. Come in at that and I strongly don't want to lose that credibility of people, being able to tell people what to expect. Interest and penalty on taxes as of right now, that is 56,900. So I actually think that can go up to 60,000.
We agree.
Make sure it gets done. Business licenses are there. Motor vehicle, I think, is running right where it should. Currently, that's at 1,188,1,500. So it seems like the, the 360, which is up from the budget last year. What was that?
Is, is that number October 31 or into November?
That would be October 31. One thing, revenues for motor vehicle and taxes and all of this don't get entered into the system until the end of each month currently. That will change with the new software, that it will be entered daily as, as part of that, which for lots of reasons is the way it should be done.
Is that entered by the clerk's office?
That information comes from there, but it's entered. The clerk's office doesn't go into the financial software, but they can, the new system out of Avatar, create a sheet that can be downloaded automatically by the finance director or person using the financial software in. So the other thing that does is enters it so it arrives for bank reconciliation. You've got matching totals to be able to reconcile transactions. Literally permits and fees for the town, those are up slightly. Permits and fees for the state are collected in the clerk's office. That's a pass-through.
You know, can I wire year-to-date for the town permits and fees? Why are we beyond the budget?
Um, I went back and looked and it looks to me that, I had that same question. And it looked to me like what happened is in 2020, the dog licenses didn't get done as well as normal because we did it in a totally different way.
Right.
So when people registered their dog in 2021, they also registered their dogs and paid the fee for 20.
Oh, interesting.
So I don't think, it doesn't look to me like that's going to continue.
Okay, okay.
Which is why it's only up a little, not that full amount.
Okay.
State fees are the pass-through. Room and meals, so we upped the budget to the actual amount we're getting for, for 2021, which is the 425.9. Now in 2022, the percentage is still up, but the room and rent, the room and meals tax rate is dropping. So I don't really know where that's going to end up in the, in the end. So I didn't drop it here. It's still substantially more than we had gotten in previous years, but I'm anticipating, although it seems like rental fees are up, so I guess your guess is, is good or not better than mine where that may end up. So cities and towns get a percentage of it and, and we guaranteed that now because it goes into a separate fund this is correct. Which was the legislation change.
Will, will there be more certainty on that another before the end of the year?
No, I didn't think so.
Yeah.
Because I don't think any, can't remember if the decreased rate has taken effect or if that's taking effect January 1.
Okay.
So that's a a little bit of an unknown. Uh. Credit control is the 200. That is down a little because of the rebound, how it's allocated. Ken mentioned building, planning and zoning fees. Where we, we had been at anyways. I'm not sure that each amount is going to continue. Building permit fees are up a little there again. No crystal ball to know what may happen next year.
I thought when we discussed this last week, Karen was going to be looking at if the, the rate for the fees should change.
That is, that is true, and she's been working on that, and that will come into you in the next few weeks, actually.
And what's the process there for changing rates? Probably talked about it last week.
The board. Ambulance charges are up some. The call rate is up based on previous history. The 310 seems to be a pretty reasonable number. Wondering Webster's share of some. They pay, the, the, what they pay is determined by a three-year call average. And they may end up going for, we'll have those call numbers soon because of, they had quite a few calls in 20 in the last year. Ambulance intercepts seem to be way down. That is where we send a paramedic to help other departments. I think more and more departments have a paramedic already available, so those, that's likely, that trend's likely to continue to go down. Transfer station reimbursement from Webster, I already mentioned that could go up to 110. That's a pretty comfortable number and transfer station commercial could go up to 140. Cyclone receipts are running ahead this year. The market had been way down. So that's another one of those unknowns. We've already gone through. Think about that.
Yeah, please don't.
That's right again.
No.
There's really grants and insurance donations and contributions. We never really know.
The, the normal question for sale of town property, the courier road property, other horseshoe tavern updates.
Courier Road, they've been doing, worked with somebody helping them finish the research, the road research there. So that is in process. DOT was, because it's a state road, DOT was involved. there. So that is in process. DOT was, because it's a state road, DOT was involved. Um, and Carolyn and I met with a woman here last week. Uh, and then Horseshoe Tavern, still hope, I don't think it's going to close by the end of this year, but hopefully the beginning of next year. Done and subdivided and so on. So.
Courier Road is a state road?
Courier Road is a state maintained road. Yes.
How about all the tax fees revenue from those? Tell us those.
Those we, we should. It's hard to know how much, but we should definitely have.
We have a plan of when that's going to happen or?
Um, so what will we? Yeah, the ones we can sell. I think we're through, we'll be through our time range near the beginning of the year. We should be able to auction off the ones that aren't.
Still the ones from last year, the ones we didn't sell to, we're going to include those all at once?
Include everything all at once. I think, and we talked briefly about that, have an auctioneer come in and call.
Yeah.
They know it's beginning to end. They know how to do it well. They'll do it right. And so there's potential there for, for some decent revenue. I don't know how much. Uh, and that's too much. Yeah.
One question we're going to have to decide on, on the revenue side is that we want to use uh, a portion of the American Rescue Plan dollars. And recognizing what we're facing, you know, between the ten and twenty percent increase in the tax rate. And you could argue certainly that, uh, some of the costs are, are driven by, uh, COVID and the supply chain issues such as so on. So I'd just say we should not take that off the table. I'm not saying we should use it now or how much, but I take it off the table. And I had given the, uh, the budget committee sort of the, uh, the ten cent, uh, update on, you know, the, what we've received from department heads and what do we, for a tax increase and, uh, you know, just to refresher, some of the drivers that we don't have any real control over. Debt service, uh, costs going up two hundred thirty eight thousand. Uh, New Hampshire retirement, forty eight thousand, Fairpoint settlement, fifty thousand. Uh, if we stay with the three and a half percent merit wage pool, that's a hundred thousand. So, uh, forty thousand. Health insurance depending on, uh, what Neil brings us for alternatives. It could be seventy thousand or three. So it is not much flexibility at all on the operating budget side.
Neil, this, this is a, your live spreadsheet, right?
Uh, yeah.
No. Okay. I was just wondering if, I mean, we've made very minor, I know, but slight adjustments on the revenue side. I was wondering if we had a, if we could recalculate the, the tax impact. And I know we have time to do that in the future, but. Neil, do both the town and school use health trusts for health insurance?
Yes, and we are in the same, we are currently in the same pool.
Huh. Now, are we like?
We are our own, the town and the school together are one healthcare.
And so are we sort of like tied to, I mean, is the school also taking a fresh look at? Are we doing that together or are we separate in terms of?
We look at our plans separately. We have a different plan anyways.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, that's right.
But we're looking at all, all of our options across the board and uh, there are basically three companies that provide health insurance, uh, to municipalities. So we're looking at all three of them.
Mm-hmm.
And it might be, uh, one of our questions is would it be cost effective for us to not be part of the school?
Mm-hmm.
Um, with health trust, if we weren't, we would be in the municipalities under a hundred. And when that was substantially more expensive the last time we looked, last few times we looked at that. So.
Are we going to look at it this time around too?
We are.
Oh, I could.
We're looking at all.
I have an expense question, but I want to wait for you to finish.
So. That's the lower middle, that was revenue. No guarantee. I think I. And this includes those.
Yeah.
See, that's, that's the other thing.
Yeah.
Three hundred and thirty one thousand last year. So that, that's just like an increase in expense. Total. Which is how basically the things can list it in the three hundred and thirty one, it's used to the nine nine six.
And, uh, at the budget committee meeting, uh, Norm and Mike Flynn, uh, talked about where the school was currently in their budgeting process and they're choosing to, uh, stay below a two and a half percent increase in the operating budget. Uh, but then, as I understand it, increases to their, uh, uh, teacher contract and, uh, HESER contract would be above that. And they're also, uh, using, uh, S, federal SIR funds. That are at this point at one time and they're also not including that two and a half percent. So, uh, I, that's just for comparative.
Spence?
So my expense question was ten, ten.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it looks like we've got two thousand dollar budget in there. And it looks like we haven't previously budgeted for that interest.
Uh, we, we've always budgeted two thousand dollars. We just someplace else. Used it just once in the timeline. And it was a rebound. Odds of us, because people here pay their taxes.
Right.
Really have not had to borrow.
We haven't had to use it.
We haven't used it.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering if we need to budget two thousand dollars for something that we had only used once during the time.
Probably not be the end of the world if it wasn't budgeted.
Yeah.
At about his end, you got the fund balance.
Right, right. Speaking of fund balance. I didn't know if at some point during the budget presentation, we were going to have a little more of the discussion of our fund balance situation.
Oh, and where we end up. So there's the summer. So nothing's been put in to add to fund balance yet.
Okay.
So, so that should, should go up.
Okay.
We took out the three thirty one.
You know, and another question is, let's say revenue is a hundred thousand over budget and the expense is pretty close to budget. That would leave us three, three hundred thirty six thousand that we could, you know, play with. Uh, but do we want to drain that?
Right.
And revenues look excellent.
That, you know, that's.
Expenses are going to be close, but revenues look.
That's why I said a hundred thousand, but maybe even better.
And so like maybe it's the way it's showing up here, does it have an estimate available? Twenty twenty is a deficit of two hundred thirty six.
It's not a real deficit.
Okay.
Certainly not a real deficit.
That's why I was like, we should be talking.
Yeah, it is after the retainage, everything's count.
But before any additional.
Any issue has been added. And one thing that does increase each year is the five percent recommended retainage because that includes town school. It's five percent of everything you call.
Everything.
Every time the budgets go up, um, that five percent recommendation goes up.
Right.
Then again, five percent is the minimum and that does not seem to be a problem for us, given that people pay their taxes on time. Some, some towns need to keep that higher.
Right. Right.
But that hasn't been an issue there. We've got enough to deal with emergencies. Like when the highway garage park, we were able to go to DRA and take funds from fund balance to buy a truck.
Yep. So do we at this point have a sense of an estimate of what will happen available?
Uh.
Or is it too early for that?
Still early. If I didn't get it, but I can probably do that. I'm pretty sure expenses are going to be very close.
Yeah.
We talked about that at the department head meeting last week, but you're okay within your budget, but no big expenses without, um, discussing at first. Uh, but revenues look very good.
Okay.
And if we could get St. Methodius to pay their back on.
That would be nice, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
And, um, the amount we've received in American Rescue Plan dollars so far.
It's three hundred one thousand, right around there.
For this year.
The total is six, you know, we see getting to two charges.
Yeah. And.
Sorry, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, so theoretically, if we, uh, took, uh, all of the ARP money and two hundred thousand for the fund balance, we would have tax increase.
Right. And then if you do that again next year and then the year after the ARPA money's gone, we start three hundred thousand in the hole.
Yes.
That's just, because I don't think there's any expenses, maybe the solve would drop. But just thinking about using one time money, what that means.
Yeah.
Of the, uh, we've got a, uh, bond that's ending in twenty twenty three for fifty thousand. We pay my bag. We indicated we're going up fifty thousand last year. So there are, are some positive things and then in, what do we say here from Webster? So.
Twenty twenty three.
Another, another thing that's going to be helped.
Right. With the bond money, remember that's figured into the CIP plan so that some of the expenses are put off while the bonds are higher and that money's already taken into consideration as it drops off to fund other states. Just.
And, and our ARPA money is from, it, it's in the category that we have the most discretion about how we use it?
It is, uh, loss revenue, which means you can basically use it however you want.
Right.
Yeah.
So Neil, next week we have police.
Police.
Carol.
And, yeah, town park tax collector. And then further discussion, I'll, I'll work on some fund balance numbers. Should have a pay my bag, better number. You can use the first hour for that.
Unfortunately, I think I'm seeping in that I understand what you're saying.
Anything else on the budget tonight? Anyone have other business? I'll move, we adjourn public comment? No, I don't know public comment. I guess, oh, I didn't realize there were people still on. If anyone who's on wants to make a comment, please do. All right. Do you have a need for? Yeah, I was going to say, do you have a need for? Yeah, maybe we'll do that next week unless people.
I'm not pushing it, I was reminding.
Yeah, no, I know. Um, I had thought about it, but I think.
Anxious about it.
Anyway. Well, maybe we should do it tonight because next week's going to be pretty bad. Otherwise, I don't know. Next week will be?
I think so.
Oh, all right.
Because it will be.
But don't we need to like start slicing and dicing next week?
So it'll be the first half hour will be appointments and then.
Okay.
And then basically the rest of the time.
We can, okay. Well, we could, could we start our non-public discussion night and then continue it? Yes.
Sure.
So, um, I guess if we can add in one non-public under, I guess it would be reputation, I think.
For tonight or next week?
Tonight, we can have that at least to start it. And then I think we'll probably need to continue it next week possibly. So I'll move that we go into non-public and after that we will adjourn and will not conduct any other business.
Second.
Yeah, this is non-public for reputation.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's a roll call vote. I'm a yes. Ken?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Jeff? All right. Thank you, Carol.